Okay. Evening, everybody. We are about to start our April 12th City Council Meeting in the city of Bonny Lake. Can everybody stand to address the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to thank everybody for being here. We have had some big crowds of late. The Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Hello?
I'm here.
Um, sorry. Deputy Mayor Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton?
Present.
Councilmember Evans-Byman?
Here.
Councilmember Swatman?
Present.
And Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Okay, we did have one agenda modification. That would be ordinance D-2248, amending of restricted parking in city parking lots, and that was asked to be added to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to add to the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh huh.
Okay. The agenda modification has been approved. And now we have a couple of proclamations. And I will read those proclamations into the record. All right. Proclamation one, whereas parks, playgrounds, nature trails, open spaces, community and cultural centers, and historic sites make a community attractive and desirable place to live, work, play, and visit, and contribute to our ongoing economic vitality, and whereas parks are a place where people can reflect, exercise, play, socialize, and have fun, and whereas public parks and open spaces help build a sense of community and are places where everybody is welcome, and whereas numerous jurisdictions, cities, and organizations, including Bonny Lake, have joined together to create an event that encourages citizens to celebrate the value and enhanced quality of life that parks bring to our communities, and whereas many businesses, benefactors, organizations, and donors have provided scholarships and donations to support this event that will bring citizens together to support their local parks, and whereas thousands of citizens throughout Pierce County will volunteer their time to clean up, unify parks and open spaces on Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, I therefore, Michael McCullough, Mayor of the city of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, proclaim April 23rd, 2022 as Parks Appreciation Day. Now I encourage all citizens to celebrate by participating in this event and assisting to clean up and unify Bonny Lake's parks, trails, and open spaces dated this 12th day of April, 2022. Okay, proclamation two, whereas 2022 is the 149th anniversary of Arbor Day, which is observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas Thursday, April 29th, has been set aside as the official Arbor Day in the city of Bonny, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious tropical rainwater, pet heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, and beauty to our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal. Now therefore, I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of the city of Bonny Lake, Washington, do proclaim Thursday, April 29th, 2022 Arbor Day in the city of Bonny Lake, and urge all citizens and property owners to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well Okay, we do have, Mr. Wells, are you here? David? Oh, there you are.
No.
Oh, yes, I see you. Okay. We have Recreation Special Events Manager David Wells in attendance to accept the proclamation. We're also passing, I'd also like to thank staff, business owners, and the community for enjoying, taking pride, and coming together to make this a greater, uh, it's a greater end. Madam Clerk, could you give proclamation to Mr. Wells? All right, very good. And Mr. Wells will be accepting the proclamation for, um, for our Arbor Day. I'd also like to thank the community for taking pride in their city and helping us preserve and plant new trees and life. Do I get a thumbs up for Mr. Wells on the, uh, on the Arbor Day proclamation? Yes. All right, now turn the floor over to Chief Jeter for the 2021 Bonny Lake Police Department Awards Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In honor of Arbor Day, I did my part. There were several trees that were damaged in the making of these awards. And hopefully it will bring these folks a lot of joy. It's nice to see there's a lot of representation from Bonny Lake PD, probably the safest spot in town at the moment, so appreciate everybody for coming. Thank you very much. We haven't been able to do this in a couple of years, as you know, because of COVID, so we appreciate having the opportunity to share the exceptional performance of our folks with you. Um, I, I know you don't get to see them very often, so it's nice for them to put faces with names, and you do the same. So, uh, everybody knows that 2021 was a pretty difficult year for, for everybody between COVID and the legislative changes. It drastically altered the way the police department delivered law enforcement services. But I just want to tell you and assure you that the men and women of the Bonny Lake Police Department made the necessary changes and adapted and are still out there fighting crime. It would have been easy to throw our hands up and say, well, the laws changed, do anything. That's not the folks that you have working for you and protecting our community. So even though we're recognizing exceptional performance of a few, I think everybody that served at the Bonny Lake Police Department deserves accolades for the performance, not only in 2021, but for all they do every day. So, uh, again, we're just recognizing a few tonight, but they continue to do great work every day. All right, well, we'll get started. First, I want to start with our tenure certificates. I have the first one for Records Clerk Heather Tower. I saw her earlier, for 15 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Bonny Lake. Next, we have a frame-worthy one for Detective Sergeant Rob Hope for 20 years of dedicated service to Bonny Lake. Okay, and, uh, we've got a couple of awards here, a couple of medals that I'd like to give for definitely performances above and beyond. The first one is for Officer Kyle Burson for lifesaving. You could step up here. Officer Burson was nominated by Sergeant Ryan Harvards, and I'll read here exactly what was medal-worthy. On February 11th, 2022, off-duty, Officer Kyle Burson observed a male collapse outside of a local business. Without hesitation, Officer Burson took immediate action and rushed to where the, the male lay. Officer Burson quickly established that the male was not breathing and had no pulse. Officer Burson directed others to call 911 and immediately began CPR. Officer Burson successfully performed CPR for several minutes. Male regained a pulse and began breathing on his own. Officer Burson continued to monitor the male until the medical aid units arrived. Male was transported and admitted to the hospital. Due to Officer Burson's quick thinking and immediate action, the male made a full recovery. Had Officer Burson not stepped up, male surely would have died. Next one, if I could have Officer Eric Alfano join me up here. This is for a Medal of Valor nominated by Assistant Chief Ryan Boyle. On June 8th, 2021, Officer Alfano was assigned as Assistant Team Leader with the Metro Tactical Response Team. Metro TRT responded to a welfare check where a male had not been heard from in over a day. Male's wife was not allowing relatives or other officers to check the male's welfare and would not allow officers inside the house. Metro TRT responded along with their negotiators, and negotiators were able to establish communication with the female, but she was not being cooperative. She ended up coming outside, out the back of the house, and she was armed with a firearm, walking towards personnel from Metro TRT. Officer Alfano fired his rifle and ended the threat. Male ultimately was found deceased in the bedroom, the suspected victim of a homicide from the female. Officer Alfano placed himself in harm's way to prevent the suspect from injuring anyone else, displaying incredible bravery in doing so. Officer Alfano placed fellow team members and the citizen's safety above his own safety, which is incredibly unselfish and courageous.
Officer Alfano's wife and children are here. Also, uh, this, this medal is unique. This is Officer Alfano's third Medal of Valor with Bonny Lake Police Department. In addition to that, he has, I have to look it up because he's very well-decorated. He has a lifesaving medal and a Medal of Merit, so he is clearly one of the most decorated officers at Bonny Lake Police Department in the history of the department, and just continues to be a humble servant and deliver excellent service to our citizens. So thank you, Eric, and you give thanks. We only said one on the wall, so we'll have to update that, too. And we only have, uh, two awards, and unfortunately neither of them could be here tonight. These awards, the Officer of the Year and the Support Person of the Year, are voted on by our supervisors. So, uh, first, we have the Support Person of the Year, which is our Administrative Assistant Haley Cole. Haley consistently has gone above and beyond with every task that she's assigned. You can give her something and she's done with it before you can get it out of your mouth. Very supportive to all the department members. She's improved our department purchasing requests. She has updated several important forms for better tracking and accountability. I know if Sheri's on the call, she appreciates that from the finance side, and has improved the format of our annual report, which should be out by the end of the week. She's also updated our inventory program to keep better track of assigned equipment. So she couldn't be here tonight. She has a young one at home. I think she's about seven months old, and it's bedtime. I tried to get her to come on virtually, but she wouldn't do that. She doesn't like the spotlight, but very well-deserved Haley Cole Support Person of And, uh, I'm thinking about receiving the Officer of the Year, questioning his dedication because he retired on March 31st and he can't even come and accept an award. That's Detective Kyle Torgerson. Served with Bonny Lake for 20 years, and as I said, recently retired on March 31st. The last seven years, he was a member of the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. He was always one of the top performers at the task force and was holding our, the auto thieves accountable, and he was telling us, I know, Assistant Chief Boyle got a hold of him to see if he could make it tonight. He's still getting calls on his phone from informants, so I'm hoping he's turning that information over. He, uh, he continued to turn in quality work until the day he retired. And just to give you one snapshot of the, the body of work that he turned in every day, we had a armed robbery of a, I think it was a T-Mobile store, one of the, the telecom carrier stores, and we had poor-quality video, but we were able to, and, and of course they had the COVID mask on, but we were able to establish a suspect. Detective Torgerson listened to hours and hours of jail conversations with that suspect and another suspect that was already in jail, and was able to establish probable cause. And Sergeant Hoag got to go through a couple of months, right, to do that? And, uh, through his, his dogged work, he was able to present that evidence to the prosecutor and get the, get an arrest warrant for robbery. And then when they did bring her in for questioning, he also got a confession out of her. And again, this is just the latest, uh, but this was something that Detective Torgerson did every day, and the supervisors felt it was worthy to, to recognize him as Officer of the Year for his, his continued performance. And again, this was on his way out, so he didn't put his feet up on the desk and say, I'm retiring. He announced last year that he was going to retire, March 31st, so it would have been easy just to put it on cruise control, but he certainly did not do. So Kyle Torg, Detective Kyle Torgerson, Officer of the Year. That wraps up the awards. Thank you for indulging me in honoring the, the men and women of the Bonny Lake Police Department. We appreciate all you do for us, and I appreciate all they do for, for our community. Thank you. I am going to go on script a little bit, because one of the things that I do want to recognize is that it should be more than one day that we appreciate and recognize all of the hard and life and death work that you do for us. Believe me, simply because we're recognizing you for one day does not mean we do not appreciate how you keep this city safe. And so I think standing ovation for everybody. I believe that's it for our public hearings. Now we'll go on to citizen comments. Um, this is your time to address the council on city business. Uh, you have five minutes. Anybody who wishes to step up to the dais and, um, and, and speak? We have somebody here who's unfamiliar with the process, who would you like to speak? Come up and, yeah, five minutes.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council and Directors, Sergeant at Arms, and past Councilmember Dan Decker, the ones of your street, East Bonny Lake, Washington. What is the root cause of homelessness? Is it rising rent and income inequality, or maybe the affordability housing issue? This isn't even the tip of the iceberg. Problem after problem create the new land of the hobo. Homeless people used to be called hobos from chemicals in the years, W, like a porn girl. There's a factor known as mental illness, drug addiction, DV, also known as domestic violence, uh, disaffiliation, where a person doesn't really, dare I say, give a damn whether they live in a house or not here anymore. They're not drug addicted, they're not mentally ill, they're just don't care. Homeless become a big business in the federal, state, and city government. I was meant to say billions of government dollars are spent each year keeping the homeless homeless. I see a trend every day, more and more people find themselves homeless by fault of their own or none. Our Democratic Socialist Marxist governor wants to spend $300 million for the homeless program in Washington State. If the full $300 million were spent on houses, that would be about 100, 1,200 houses. If $250,000 were spent on each. Who would own the houses? That's the real question. How many people would be put into each house? Who would take care of the houses? The drug addicted, mentally ill, or the DV, the disaffiliation, people that are disaffiliated from wanting a house? And even we have many people that are divorced who all of a sudden have no home. And again, that's mainly no fault of their own, but circumstances sometimes override, sorry, save that. Divorced would have these houses, excuse me, these people would have these houses destroyed sooner than not. Saying to that is, with drug addicted people, with mentally ill, with people that don't care, into a house, they're not going to respect it, they're going to destroy it. Who's going to take care of these houses? How many people are going to be in these houses? Five people, one people, just one family? Probably not. So that would mean that there would be a dormitory like home, which there are many of those in Tacoma right now, and somebody has to care for those houses. And you put a person on for eight hours, three times, three different people, eight hours a day each, what is that going to cost? 150, 250,000 a year? I don't know. Money spent, money lost. The government spending money and getting nothing back for it. There are many people that are being paid for the homeless issue, but there's really nothing being done about the homeless issue, if it being a big business. And that's what it's become, a big business. $300 million from the state of Washington, times 50, there are 50 states, that's getting into the billion-dollar range, several billion-dollar range. Big business, and I don't believe the government wants to stop that big business, especially the governor of the state of Washington. Thank you very much.
Decker? Anybody else to do the order? Okay, hearing from nobody else, we will go to committee reports. Can we hear from the finance committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the finance committee met today at 5:00 PM. We had a personnel update by Chuck McEwen. The main points were, uh, we have a, uh, hire letters in progress for Illegal Specialist One, an internal finalist was identified, a conditional letter for, uh, building inspector with an expected start date of mid-May. Uh, with receipt of applications for a code enforcement officer. They have three candidates to interview. Uh, PC network specialist, interviews are coming. Public Works, seasonal, they have ongoing recruitments, uh, and upcoming retirements. Uh, John Woodcock has a, uh, still date to be determined, but, uh, supposedly it's coming soon. Uh, and then multiple are upcoming in Public Works. Uh, there's been a lot of staffing changes, and so many, I'm not going to go into all of them here on this report, but if anybody would like to, uh, get with me, we can go through them if you would like. Uh, the other items we took care of were, uh, business in action items, AB 22-56, which was the senior center lunch delivery drivers. Uh, that's going to be coming forward to the consent agenda on April 22nd, and AB 22-57, an increase for hours for the senior center dishwasher and kitchen aide. Their, uh, duties and, and number of people that they have been serving have gone through the absolute roof, uh, kind of like what we've heard from the food bank and whatnot during COVID, and so they need a little bit of extra help there. Uh, we approved our minutes, and we had an open discussion in regards to, uh, well, two of them in regards to the prosecutor's office. Uh, they are going to be putting in for a federal grant, uh, that could help us quite a bit of money to, uh, fund such things as a DV advocate, uh, victim outreach, et cetera. Uh, this would be a, a grant that's good for 48 months, and then we would need to reapply for it, uh, but anybody hired under the grant would be hired basically knowing that they're, uh, here as long as the grant is here, essentially. Uh, the other item was, another item with the prosecutor's office would be to sign on to a class action lawsuit that's going on, uh, and that would give us 12% of the proceeds that come back to Pierce County, which would be quite a bit of money potentially, uh, in suing the drug manufacturers, opiate manufacturers that essentially knew, uh, what was going on as they marketed their product, uh, saying that they were non-addictive or whatnot at the time. And, uh, that was our discussion items this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Uh, can we hear from the Community Development Committee?
Mayor, thank you. The meeting on April 5th, we had several items of business. Also, uh, with leak detection hooks for the water system, go around and listen for leaks, good recovery rate there, well worth the money. As a normal maintenance program, which was, uh, moved to this agenda item this evening, recommended for approval. Also, Resolution 3038, which is, uh, is a contract for the, uh, actual design, not the actual work of the Avenue Overlay project for 200, which is out there, going toward the school there, up front of one of those, their section, that needs to be replaced. And then you'll see a future contract, of course, for the actual work after the design goes to bed. We've our minutes, and then we discussed a little bit about the concession agreement. I think I've come to this.
Yes.
So that was all, went through and was agreed to by the vendor out there. They worked out staff, did a great job working with them. Some of those issues that we heard about previously at the council for that, uh, kayak and boat rentals out there. Were our items this evening?
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. One question, Mr. John Stone, considering that I, and I think everybody was from experience.
No.
And, uh, mid-April, have we finally gotten concrete poured over at, uh, over at Public Safety, uh, the new public service building?
Some of the concrete. There is still some to go, yes. Uh, but the bigger item, and probably the one, that's still coming.
All right, thank you. Okay, can we hear from the Public Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety met tonight. We had a report given to us by these public service. They will be doing their annual report in front of us on Tuesday, May 3rd. As far as breaking land on their permit, uh, they hope to have that by the end of the month with, uh, breaking land by summer time. They have hired a mental health professional that will be starting soon to be available to help on calls with both these Pierce and, uh, Bonny Lake. And they will have a La Hardro coming up that they are working with Bonny Lake on as well. Uh, we received a report from Chief Jeter on the monthly police reports. We do have a new officer, Gould, that has started, and as he mentioned tonight, the Officer of the Year, Detective Torgerson, uh, has retired. Uh, interviews are currently scheduled for some lateral positions, um, and we're looking to onboard them sometime in early July. Uh, next month, then we will have a Pierce County contract, Pierce County Security Contract, that will be coming forward for Allenmore Park. We reviewed and approved Resolution 3036 for out-of-state travel for a chief convention, chief conference, and AB 2263 about boat trailer parking signage. We had open discussion on the Allenmore boat launch, which was just finding some of the things we talked about last week, and moving forward with the, uh, the removal of the barriers once we get the science out and just some of the details of how the emails will go out, the lock code and all that kind of stuff. Uh, we reviewed and passed our minutes, and we adjourned.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Evans. Chief Jeter, is that the convention in Hawaii or Tahiti?
Your old, your old stomping grounds in Dallas.
Oh, yes. My condolences.
Autoclo.
That's right. For the report. Okay, hearing. And we move to the. Come vote. As it was amended. Second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Give ayes from, um, uh, Councilmember McLean and Deputy Mayor Carter. Very good, two thumbs up. Okay, so our consent agenda has been adopted. And now we do have Finance Committee issue, item A. Madam Clerk, could you read that?
This is item A, Bridges' motion, AB 22-55. Council motion would be to approve applicating American Rescue Plan Act funding to the Bonny Lake public.
So move.
I can.
And do we have any discussion? Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That increase, as Mr. Decker even alluded to tonight, been dramatic this past year. Even the food bank, uh, has had their highest day yet, I heard, today. The senior center from Sulu, we heard that she had her biggest day today. So funding is a necessity ahead of this. We have those funds that can be spent with the food bank, I do suggest that we do approve this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Watson. Any further discussion? Councilmember? Councilmember McLean? Councilmember McLemons.
Yeah. So can you hear me?
Yes.
Fabulous. So I would just like to remind the council that it was the Sixteenth Amendment in the early nineteen hundreds that permitted the federal government to exact a tax on people's income. That is of the states, Constitution of the United States. It's a serious business. These American Rescue Plan funds are, have been taken from the citizens of Bonnie Lake. They've got lots of DC and now they're coming back. I look at the purpose of funds. I struggle with giving the money to the food bank when I consider the role of government. The role of the government is to provide for public safety and infrastructure. And the food bank, I wonder, being fair and equitable in the distribution of these funds to the single food bank in Bonnie Lake. There are many organizations in Bonnie Lake to provide assistance to the poor. And we're not providing funds to those. So I think the role of government here is that we're choosing winners and losers when we choose to support the food bank in lieu of others. And this is a fairly recent activity we've taken. And so I can't support this measure. I would, I applaud the work of the food bank and I applaud the work of others in the community, of local community groups that help churches and other organizations such as the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, but I don't think this role of government subsidize these things. Especially when it is backed by the really big ask of exacting money from people through the federal government.
Okay. Oh, all right. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember McLemons. Have we any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In just for what Bonnie Lake is, we have been supporting the food bank for, since its inception. Provided them with a building, we provided them with the utility coverage. The transition to where they're at is something that is great. We've been looking for them to grow beyond what we can provide for them. I think for the next three years, for this funds, and like Councilmember McLemons says, these are taxpayer funds. And the people that are in need are also taxpayers. And, you know, giving back some of their own money back to them where they don't have the opportunity to fight for their families or their meals. I mean, full support of this. And to me, it is what Bonnie Lake is all about, is community. And despite that they're two hundred yards outside of our city, they are community and they have been part of our core for many, many years. And I'd love to keep them apart that.
You actually measured two hundred yards.
Probably would.
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. Do we have any further discussion? Oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, this is something that I wrestled with and I went back and forth with. And this was really tough for me to consider as I did not want to take things lightly. There are a couple of things that were conflicting within me as I was looking, just paperwork. I did go through some of the ARPA funds that have been allocated, but also have been earmarked for things that we have discussed. And there's just more projects than there is now. And so I, I don't see a justification in being able to take money out of the ARPA funds in the projects. I looked at all of the proposed things, and I felt like we would have to be making a decision. Say, okay, well then we'll take this away from your residents, you know, and then, you know, allocate this money to the food bank. Do I believe what the food bank is doing is excellent? Yes. I do believe that the role of government, I agree with Kelly, Councilmember McLemons, that the role of government is not charity. And in my personal opinion, charity is not reaching in the pockets of one person and handing it to somebody else, because that is essentially what government is. We are dealing with other people's money and making decisions for other people. And so I think it's easy to look at this. I'm reminded of Davy Crockett in his campaign to try to win people. And he went out to the public and they had made a decision to give charity. It was a wonderful charitable thing, but they did not reach into their own pockets and give to charity. They reached into the taxpayer. And it's really hard for me to justify. I do, however, support the lockers that were proposed and giving a space for that. So I am open to those kinds of conversations in the future. And I strongly believe in what's being there. It's way better than anything that is out there. And so unfortunately, this evening, I am not going to be able to.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. We have held Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah. So what I'm having an issue with is looking through the budget items for the ARPA funds. It really appears that we pretty much allocated all of the funds. So I'm just trying to wrap my brain around where is this going to come from?
Four point five million unallocated.
Is unallocated?
I mean, I'm looking at the ARPA proposed March 2022 balance ledger. And there is, there is allocated funding, but then there's proposed uses, all of which are would use up all of those funds and leave eighty-two thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars left. I don't know if there's more money coming in or
Those aren't, they haven't voted to allocate.
Oh, absolutely. But I'm looking at each of those, those earmarked items for thought, and they're all important things. I was trying to figure out which things we could take off. I don't see where that is. I am, I looked through every budgeted thing as far as proposed use, and all of it is useful. So I just, I don't know if we're getting more ARPA funding or not, but there's eighty-two thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars left, and that doesn't include any of the other things that we've been discussing that we wanted.
I agree.
Oh, absolutely.
When, when this was brought up, it was, you know, I argued that ARPA funds should be going back to the much as spending four or five million dollars on public works projects won't change anyone's bill today, tomorrow, or probably the next five or six years. It is all absolutely paramount, and it does need to be funded. But when we looked at that initial thing, we had six point five million dollars dedicated, not helping one single person in our community. It was helping our infrastructure. But there wasn't anything about, I mean, we just passed, of course, when we just passed lines above for Kid House. We have the food bank, we have other nonprofits that could be, that could benefit from this. But we had no immediate impact on anyone in our community that the ARPA funds was going to. And now everything that they proposed is one hundred percent great we needed. It's a matter of, right now, those funds, those projects, those are our responsibility. We took on those, that infrastructure doesn't change because we have ARPA funds. That is a responsibility of our own that we should have budgeted for years ago. And, you know, we're going to take advantage of the ARPA funds to use that. But right now, that's helping us out as a state. And in turn, it will help out our citizens, but there's no immediate help to our citizens with the use of the ARPA funds. That's why I wanted to do something with the food bank to help out the citizens that are in Bonnie Lake to get an immediate, and two hundred or a hundred fifty thousand dollars of the four point five is, you know, it's a large amount. But in the grand scheme of things, it's pretty minimal compared to the impact that will have versus five million dollars on public works. Today, we'll be able to feed families, or help, if we can feed families to the day, that five million dollars on public work infrastructure won't change anyone's bill for probably a decade in upcoming projects. So it's necessary, and we need to still work towards that. That's why we've got the rig study going, or we're trying to figure out other means of funding for that. But for me, that's why, I mean, we have to support our community. And this has been a part of Bonnie Lake as long as I can recall. I mean, probably the last twenty-five years, food bank has been in Bonnie Lake, and Bonnie Lake has supported this bank. So to me, this is just an extension of that. We've been graced with the money of the taxpayers. I think we have to do right by them, but I think we also have to support those that are in need. That's, I think, you said something right.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Evans. Now, Councilmember Fulton, you did not, you were not able to
For all of that. But my thing is, is like, I feel like, you know, we saw the presentation, and we didn't really discuss it that night. And now all of a sudden, we're getting this, and I feel like we're supposed to be voting on this. And, you know, I wasn't aware that when we were going to get the presentation, that we were going to be asked for money. And it was my understanding gave the forty-two thousand dollars, I believe is what it was, in funds over the summer, or last year in 2020, or whatever it was. I wasn't on council at that time. But I thought that was kind of like a one-time ask, and it was to help them so that they could move. And now I'm just wondering, you know, if we continue to support, is this going to be something that's going to be expected from us every three years? We're going to be asked for another fifty thousand dollars. And at some point, we're not going to have ARPA money to fund this. We're not going to have the ability to just give to an organization. You know, and we have many organizations that are nonprofit and that are not-for-profit that could benefit from this money as well. So where do we, where do we give funds to one and not to another? You know, how do we begin to choose, kind of like when we closed all of the businesses down? You know, who was, who was considered essential? And who gets the funds? So I'm just, I'm having a problem with fair and equitable when we're just giving to one organization and not many. And is this going to be something that's going to be expected for years in the future? And if we can have a discussion or something, I'm not set in my ways. Oh, and we have comments over here too.
And we would have to vote for you to make a comment.
I would make a motion to allow
And I'll second that. All approved of. Ms. Serenka making the comment here? Okay.
Aye.
And formally, all any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing us up for discussion. And if I can answer any questions. I wanted to just kind of reflect on, you know, what the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is and just kind of revisit that before we go into any further questions or clarity. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 provides substantial infusion of resources to eligible state, local, and tribal governments to help reverse the negative impacts of the pandemic, address its economic fallout, and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery. So I might be biased, but I would say that the Bonnie Lake Food Bank and the three point five million dollars that we have spent thus far on COVID relief and economic recovery has been nothing short of miraculous. The citizens of Bonnie Lake have reached into their own pockets and provided over seventy-five percent of that revenue that it took for us to operate. You know, all of the relocation and everything that we do, I like to tell people, if it is fancy, has a bell or a whistle attached to it. That was me and my vice president at two in the morning writing a grant for it. The citizens of Bonnie Lake paid for the food that came in. And I was on a call this morning with the WSDA. The funding that has come to me through the WSDA, which is our primary source, through 2023, it will expire on October twenty, twenty twenty-three. I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three. And will go back to, from forty-eight million that has been infused into food banks like ours to sixteen million dollars to go all over the state. And so that is a huge reduction in our sustainability. And so while I have, you know, time to counsel, and there is that forty thousand dollars, I need you to know that it costs seventy-five thousand dollars a month from the food. We are in a whole new level of operation. Today was my historic high since the beginning of, you know, the pandemic. And I'm looking not at how I'm going to get through this year. I'm really looking long-term, which is how the Bonnie Lake Food Bank has continued to sustain. So in answer to how do we discern who to give money to, I would say, I would love for you to consider that the Bonnie Lake Food Bank just, you know, this past year has put one million dollars cash into the local economy. I put eight point nine million dollars in resources over the last two and a half years. And I would say we are the largest crisis relief in this area, not just in the city. So, you know, I, I absolutely believe in all the work that nonprofits do. But I think when you're considering resources within a community that we do need to take care of organizations that are taking daily, it is not a small job. And we have done it with a fraction of what larger cities have done. And yet we have doubled the amount of output in terms of food and crisis relief. When people get off the phone from the Red Cross, they are given my number, my cell number. So we are not just food relief, we are not just domestic violence relief, we are not just mental health. We are all things in a community. We became all things because we have established ourselves as a business that is in the business of we've done so very, very well. So I do know that I'm, you know, asking a lot tonight historically. But less than five percent of our income comes from, you know, state and local. We have been self-sustained, self-made, grassroots, pick-up-yourself-by-your-foot straps and roll kind of organization, and we'll continue to do so regardless of how you feel about it or not. You know, personally, we'll continue to serve the citizens of Bonnie Lake just like we, how we have. I just want to thank you for considering this. I'm obviously quite passionate about caring for the citizens of Bonnie Lake, and that will not change. So thank you very much. If you have any questions for me.
Yes. You have questions?
I don't, I don't I'll go, I'll, yes, I'll just kind of make a statement, have a question. I guess it's the rhetorical. So I'm listening to what you said, and I'm listening to the mission statement of the ARPA funds. And as well, that seventy-five percent of the Bonnie Lake citizens have donated their time and money and resources to the, to the Bonnie Lake market. So to me, that says that the people in Bonnie Lake have spoken, and they have voted. And so I would say seventy-five percent is the majority. And so I, and seeing that the pandemic is literally over at this point, and today was your historic high of need, that tells me that there is still a massive need in the community. So I believe that, you know, after hearing your response, that I could get behind this at least for, I would say, the next three years. And I would be hard-pressed after that to consider something else, but that's not a no either. So I will change my statement, and I think with that, people have spoken.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Fulton. Councilwoman Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Remind everyone that eighty percent of the people that the food bank serves are from Bonnie Lake. Reminder that the Bonnie Lake City has supported the food bank, here's its whole location. Reminder, we have law and associates have gone down in the department, volunteered. Reminder that I have acknowledged homes in Bonnie Lake that need food, that are in need of something, now appreciated they are, here are Bonnie Lake citizens. Reminder, this money came from, so this money came from the citizens of Bonnie Lake. Reminder that the cost of living is increasing dramatically every day. Reminder, the gas is going up every day. So these people have to get their food somehow because there's, maybe they have available food, does not. And one last thing, reminder that Jason and her crew buy a lot of food from the city of Bonnie Lake's retail stores. And all of our turkeys at Thanksgiving, we buy them along with the church in town, and they buy it from Walmart, increase their sales, gives employees something, keeps the store in business. So we're not only helping the food bank, helping the people that live here, helping the people who are making eighty thousand dollars a year and can't afford to buy food. And that's a big different thing for people, and they rarely face that. And they can't And they can't take gas to work. So there are so many things, and right now, we have this money available that can be used for the Food Bank. In three years, like you said, let's discuss it. Who knows what Stacy will come up with, her crew out there, be able to support themselves. They've always been in Bonnie Lake, we have always supported them, and I think we still should support with one of those.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Watson. Any further discussion before we move forward? Cherry, answer. Okay, well, we have Councilmember Carter. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have definitely struggled with this, going back and forth the entire time. My struggles come from, you know, some of the things that have already been said as far as government, the money, and going to one place and that. My reasons for wanting to move forward are kind of built into, I guess, what I've seen over this last little bit, and what Stacy and the other members of her team have done, you know, since COVID, with moving into the new Food Bank and turning it around, and essentially, I think, really being careful and mindful of the money that they have brought in, and essentially, you know, making it do more, right? Really working to make every dollar count. And like I said, I literally, I think I was struggling, waiting to see how people were going to go and try and decide. I'm still trying to decide, as we were talking here. I am going to vote yes on this at this time, and really, it's because of my faith in Stacy and her team and what they have done. You may remember, I think I was initially against giving the Food Bank any money several years ago when we did this, because, again, they were unproven, and I had seen kind of what it was. But I've definitely seen what the change that has been made and how many people they have helped. And so I certainly respect everybody's views on this, and I, like I said, I've gone back and forth with it, but I will be voting yes on this tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Now, I will, oh, Councilmember McLeans, do you have a response or...
Yeah, I still, I still struggle with this after all this discussion, and I would, I would think it would be prudent for the council to consider perhaps making a grant available in a dollar amount that we, maybe we take that funding that's out there, and we say, this much is available, and this size of block grant for organizations that want to fulfill that role in the community. Because there's certainly more than one facility that can distribute food, and we're picking a winner here. And we're actually not only just picking a winner, but we're giving them more money than we've ever given them. And I, one, I'm concerned about the precedent, and two, I'm concerned that we're being fair, or not fair, but that we are not put in a position of picking winners and losers, but that we're letting the, you know, that there's a, the, the, that there's some fairness or some availability here. I don't feel like we were given the opportunity to discuss that if indeed the city's role is to, the city chooses to distribute charity, that we are careful about how that, that's being done. Now, there's a lot of credit to the Food Bank in the sense that there's such confidence in them. And I don't mean to shake that confidence. I, you know, I applaud the work they do. I'm just concerned that there are other organizations that have goals and want to reach people as well that could use the help, too. So that's kind of my struggle here, is that, this is a problem when, you know, we are a country of laws. We are a, the city is here for, to make, you know, we legislate laws, and the laws are enforced. And, but then when we talk about charity and goodwill, now it's very difficult. Now, now we're into difficult areas, and I think we have to be careful and consider things a little more broadly and maybe move a little slower. Though I feel rushed, and I feel like we're not considering all the opportunities that are available. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McLeans. Now, again, we have Ms. Ryerson wishes to make a comment, however, we ran through the council. All in favor of Ryerson being in the council?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Ryerson, do you have a comment?
It's not a comment. I just wanted to kind of clarify some of the ARPA rules. Specifically in the ARPA rules, it does allow for Food Bank funding. So I just wanted to ease that from a discussion point for you guys tonight. In the rules, it does specifically talk about funding Food Banks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ryerson. And one last comment from Ms. Serenka.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to answer to Ms. McLeans. About winners and losers, I just want to make sure for the public that we all understand this, that in feeding human beings, there aren't winners or losers. It isn't about my confidence, it isn't about winning or losing. If there are other organizations in our community that are putting $3 million out into the local economy, I absolutely would want them to have, you know, fair game to ask for funding. That is our right as an organization and a nonprofit to do so. It's not about confidence, as much as it is that I am the voice of many people that need our help right now. And they voted today when 156 families voted, my highest ever, higher than when I had 11, you know, National Guards working for me, higher than the onset of the pandemic. And so I also wanted to kind of address the idea that I will be coming back to get more money. I think that I have been, in all of my fundraising, I, I'm not a good beggar, not a good beggar. I only come and ask if I know that this is part of what will stabilize us, and I'm very finite about what that dollar amount is to do, and what that's going to do so that we can continue to serve. I will emerge from the pandemic a very different organization. There are many people that are using resource that never knew they needed it and are far from recovery. So in terms of will I read back, my hope with this innovative model that is, from what I understand, the only one in the state, is that I will be self-sustaining. The big plan is that I get there. I'm going to need a little bit of foundation because I'm in the third year of a pandemic, fighting as hard as I did on that first day. The only reason I'm here. If I was in a better position, I wouldn't have taken this. So this is absolutely about crisis relief for the citizens of Bonnie Lake, and it is about stabilizing our organization, as ARPA says, stabilizing our economic vitality, so that I can continue to serve and run like the business that I have for the last two and a half years and become self-sustaining. So I hope that that's my next report when I come, that we have achieved that.
And a question.
Okay.
Yeah, so in your opinion, had the pandemic not happened, would you be standing here today?
Oh, definitely not.
Right. And the mission statement of the ARPA funds was to stabilize businesses and communities and Food Banks, and help the communities who have been impacted because of the pandemic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Watson.
Thank you, one last comment. Generosity Stacy has for other charities in the town. Lanch Kid's House was part of a truckload of food since ago down the hall. I brought a truckload back to Lanch Kid's House. And also Stacy brought a truckload of those same time, too. Today, in finance, we found they have a real tough time getting food. I mentioned Stacy, she says, I'll call students so we can do for her. During the pandemic, things went on, we shared resources amongst all three, put in some or two. So the generosity from our Food Bank, which is just like the outside city, that goes hand-in-hand. I call them, she doesn't need what we have, I have excess, she'll take it. Everything stated within our community is helping our people. So that truckload of food that we have is going to stay within the city itself, too. So we work so great for the charities and charities.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Watson. Are we ready to move to a vote? Yeah, oh, Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, as I was sitting here thinking about this, listening to everybody, I had the thought, we had talked earlier in Finance Committee in regards to the senior center and the job that they're doing, and some of the potential overlap that may be occurring between what the senior center is doing with their lunches and whatnot, and what the Food Bank does. And I would be curious, obviously, it's not tied to this money or anything, but I would be curious to see if those two could connect and share resources in some way that we could help, you know, more people for less, essentially. I'd be interested in that maybe moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. All right, I believe we're ready to move to a vote. All in favor of approving AB 20... Bonnie Lake, here's to any more. Allocate the, through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding to the community, to the Bonnie Lake Food Bank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And how many did we have there? Let's get that for record. We have Councilmember Watson, Councilmember Fullerton, Councilmember Evans, and, oh, and Deputy Mayor Carter, so we have four. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have two, and that would be Councilmember McLeans, that would be Councilmember Baldwin, and I believe Councilmember Swatman has not voted one way or the other. That would be by proxy and a statement, meaning that we would have to explain this statement. Mayor? Yes. Yes.
You know, I've seen you kind of do this before, but I don't think you're exactly following our procedures. So I was kind of wondering about that, you know, it's fine that, you know, a council member that doesn't answer to the vote, doesn't need to answer the vote to the affirmative, it's kind of this affirmative, and then it seems to be that you basically, I don't know if you have the power to call for a rule call, but basically, it's there. So in my estimation and understanding of the council rules, is when you call for a vote, council members vote yes or no, and then you just move on.
Okay.
You know, I don't know, I'm a little wild, so...
Well, it is candidly directed. I'm sorry, and I don't, I didn't mean to speak over you, Councilman Swatman. I do believe I was following the procedures, but it's been voted by the Bonnie Lake, which has been adopted by the requirements of Washington. If not, we certainly will correct that. However, the vote that we've taken, I believe we do have a forum with floor members, so this motion has been announced. Okay? All right, and I believe we have no more issues, no executive foreclosed session. So I believe seeing no more business, we are adjourned.
I know.
Oh, but we are not...
I have some discussion time.
Of what, I can better imagine.
Well, I would like to make a motion.
Uh, two, four, one.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to, how do I phrase this? To purpose a budget amendment to turn Ballpark Four into a parking lot and amend the budget before our Vidennial budgeting meeting in December. I know I, because we need to give Ryan a clear definition of what we want to do with the parking lot, and we need to have this decided before December, otherwise...
Square, point of order. We actually need for a workshop, we can discuss the next...
This is full council issues, are we not allowed to vote to then have it?
It has to be on the agenda for a council.
Okay, but a council can't decide to vote right now, onto a full council.
Earlier, you could have earlier than agenda. I'm sure there's a procedure that you can do to go back.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to save this for a, for the workshop then?
Yes. Okay. And I believe since, Councilmember Fullerton did bring up a motion. At this point, are you, or are you withdrawing?
To withdraw.
Yes.
So I make a motion to withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Fullerton. I believe that does cover every, we have on the agenda, so we are adjourned. All right. Yes.